We'll call the regular meeting of Tuesday, September 30th, 2025 to order if we can stand for the Fledge of Allegiance. Fledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Douglas.
Here.
Ms. Hayes. Mr. Horvath. Here. Mrs. Sensi.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
Here.
Board members are present.
So your motion to approve the agenda.
I'll move.
A second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
Mr. Horvath.
Yes.
Mrs. Sensi.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of August 19th, 2025?
I'll move.
A second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
Mr. Horvath.
Yes.
Mrs. Sensi.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of September 2nd, 2025?
I'll move.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
Mr. Horvath.
Yes.
Mrs. Sensi.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
To start off, board member reports, I just wanted to mention that Michelle Hayes was unable to be here tonight. Her significant other had a serious surgery. She's taking care of him, so we'll miss her for this evening. With any other board members wishing to give reports?
Yeah, I do. A couple of things. Today, Dan and I had the opportunity to meet the leadership team at Great Lakes Power. They're located behind the Loves Center up there up by the freeway. It was pretty phenomenal. It's 150,000 square feet. Facility. They do power transmissions for tugboats or big cranes and stuff. And we walked through the facility and I'll be honest, we got a little geeked out about seeing all the different parts and everything. And but one of the things we discussed was some potential partnerships. And we talked about the skill sets they were looking for as graduates. Talked about some opportunities for internships and career possibilities for our students. What was noteworthy is that we met, I don't know, it was five or six people that are former Madison grads. And that was very exciting to see that they are being successful in their career. And they've graduated over the years here. You know, we hear a lot of negative things, but it's just really positive sees the success of these employees and stuff. And the second thing is I had an opportunity on Friday to go see Cafe 24 up front. And I was very impressed with the young people that were doing that. Dan, you should be very proud of that. Just to see that the life skills that they're learning and able to take from the classroom into that is phenomenal when they all run it. And I just was really blown away how successful they're doing. And the whole group was just, it was just amazing. And I, you know, I just think anytime we can have those kind of programs where they learn it from the classroom, they take it out hands-on and it's just so precious. I guess that's my stories tonight, reports.
Anyone else wishing to give a report?
No, just I've been getting a lot of positive feedback, Dan, about you being present in the district, at events and in the schools and stuff. So appreciate that. And just want to let you know it's being recognized by all the stakeholders. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes.
Question I have is how long did it take you to get that paint off of your face from Friday night's game?
It was a bit long, warm shower.
Was it? Was it like a lightning bolt he had on there? I was wondering how long it took you for you to get that off.
It was really, it was really good. I, they're doing it again at the next game, I think the 17th, if I remember correctly. So I'll be getting it done again. It's actually cool. I like that it looked like, it was supposed to be like the David Bowie album.
Ziggy Stardust.
Yep. It was supposed to be like that, so.
Now you look awesome with it. I'm just very impressed.
I am a little bit older than you.
All right. We do not have anyone registered for public participation, so we'll move on to reports and recommendations of the treasurer.
Thank you. Item 8.01 is recommendation to approve the financial statements for August of 2025. In summary, the general fund has year-to-date revenue through August of $8,135,000 compared to $8,081,000 last August. Expenditures totaled $6,339,000 as opposed to $4,662,000 last year. The ending fund balance, the general fund for August was $3,664,000 compared to $5,941,000 last year. Recommend approval of statements.
Second. Any discussion?
Just because we had $3 million doesn't mean we could just go really spend it.
Wouldn't be recommended.
You know, and I think, you know, that's important for people to understand. Yeah, just because we have it doesn't mean.
Yeah.
You know, it's.
We'll be bringing things more into focus next month when we talk about the financial forecast.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll be talking a little bit in appropriations about that.
Okay.
See.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
Mr. Horvath.
Yes.
Mrs. Sensi.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Motion carries four zero. Item 8.02 is a long list of very generous donations totaling over $9,700. They include four $500 donations from the Madison Family Restaurant, Cinderella, Stanny, I hope I pronounced that correct, $500 to each of the schools. A donation of $23 from an anonymous donor to South Elementary School Angel Fund. Donation of $1,000 from the Schuman family to South Elementary School Physical Education Department. Donation of 36 pizza boxes from KJ Pizza to South Elementary School for the Stepping Stone Project. A donation of $50 and two $25 gift cards from Baked by Bell Kurt and Izzy Smith to Madison Middle School for streak of the month. Donation of $500 from Lu Stone Perennials to Madison High School to be used for the Model UN. A donation of $1,000 from Robin and Forrest Barney to Madison High School to be used for student council. A donation of $2,000 from the User Family Foundation to Madison High School to be used for service learning projects. A donation of $100 from Thomas and Sandra to Salvatore Madison High School to be used to maintain the Gabe's Garden Market. A donation of $1,000 from Madison Boosters for the purchase of an iPad and Apple pencil for the high school art classes. And lastly, a donation of $2,000 from the Madison Boosters, Madison High School to be used for service learning projects. I recommend these donations be accepted.
I'll move.
A second.
Any discussion? Thank you to all who donated. Roll call, please.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
Mr. Horvath.
Yes.
Mrs. Sensi.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Motion carries four zero. And lastly, on my agenda is resolution to approve the permanent appropriations for the fiscal '25, '26 fiscal year and the Certificate of Estimated Resources. Just start with the bottom line. We're asking for appropriation measure in the general fund of $31,948,000. I'm sorry, $31,948,715. This compares to final appropriation last year of $30,934,162. That represents a 3.3% increase. For all funds total, we're asking for appropriations of $39,357,940 compared to a final appropriation last year of $38,484,435. That represents a 2.3% increase. Coming late to the game, I ended up in developing these numbers using a lot of the, basing it off of actual expenditures from last year and then, and then working from there. I did, in particular for the general fund, there has been some work done in the financial forecast for the year, so I did use that quite a bit in the appropriation for the general fund. The federal and state grants are easy because there are allocations given, plus some carryover funds from the previous year, so we put those into place with appropriations. And for the most part, all the other funds, I based on actual expenditures from last year, along with a little bit of inflationary factor. So that's how I came to these numbers. Particularly with the general fund, as the board knows, the general fund is approximately 80% personnel. So what's built into this in salaries is a 2% increase across the board increase, which was negotiated for the year, plus an increase of 1.7% for the normal step movement from years of service. That's kind of a historical thing. So between the two of those, 3.7%, we netted out a reduction based on a net reduction of five staff members this year compared to last year. Moving into benefits, approximately half of your benefit costs are made up of things that are tied directly to salaries, most specifically retirement system obligations. So those kind of go up and down with salaries, so I just tied the same changes in salaries to those benefits. And again, it's about half of the total cost of the benefits. The other half of benefits lie mostly in medical insurance, and this is where we're running into a problem. The board may or may not know, I may do inform earlier, that we are going to be receiving a 19% increase in premiums in January. In addition to that, every district within the healthcare consortium was assessed an amount this last August that we paid. For us, that was $430,000, so we're taking a pretty big hit in medical insurance this year.
So we're going to be paying an additional $430,000 come January 1st?
We already did.
We already did.
Paid that in August.
That was in August.
January 1st is when the increased medical premiums.
Okay, so the 19% is going to happen in January.
Yes.
In January of 2025.
Is any of that driven by the one district getting out of it?
You know, I honestly, I don't know enough about the consortium.
I was just wondering if they're trying to make up for the loss there by spreading the increase across the other.
Yeah, I can help you out. So no, because that district also has to pay still, and they have to pay to exit the plan.
Oh, okay.
It's really just a reflection on the continually increasing cost of medical insurance, which is something that being part of that, we need to keep correcting. You know, there's going to be some changes that we're going to have to work on with unions to look at how our medical insurance is currently laid out, distributed in the plan options. It's going to have to keep adjusting. I think everybody, everywhere has felt that impact of medical insurance. It just continues to increase and go up. And thankfully, in the education system, typically the medical insurance is really, you know, it's a really positive, positive within education universally, and it's pretty common. But much like everywhere else, it's going up. It's going to reflect the same way with us in every district I've been at, continually gone up. So I would imagine 10 years from now, we'll be talking about how it's going up. It's just the nature of, you know, the human.
It's not going to result.
Yeah. If 430,000, that's just a lot of money.
It is.
Because that hurts us being able to do other things.
It does. It is definitely impactful, but obviously we want to have good insurance for our people.
Oh, yeah. I mean, that's never a question.
It's a balance.
It's not a question, but it just, I think the public doesn't realize these things.
Sure.
And we need to maybe just be more communicate them through some, I don't know, you know, emails or a letter or something showing that we're getting hit with these things and we're having to adjust for it.
Yeah, it's the nature, much like Steve said, I mean, you know, schools are not immune to inflation. You know, our eating bills, electric bills, everything goes up. You know, when we go to buy things for our students and staff to use those prices have gone up there. You know, other than TVs, which I think TVs have.
I know, they keep going down.
Everything else.
The bigger they are, the cheaper they are.
It's the same thing with, you know, I, we had a meeting concerning Chromebooks, which are wonderful tools for our kids and wonderful learning. But the continuing increase in cost in those, and of course, kids use them, they pray for the cost to replace them. You know, and it, it didn't, it didn't change, you know, textbooks at one point were the big cost. Now I think it's become more technology and Chromebooks, but the cost hasn't, you know, changed from downward. It's just different, you know?
What, do you know offhand how much a Chromebook usually costs us?
I actually do, because we just had the conversation, $270.
$270? And that's the, a newer.
It's like a new Chromebook.
It's a new one, okay.
And the management says platform.
Yeah, yeah, and the management system. But Chromebooks basically have a lifespan of three years. We tend to extend it a little bit to four years to try to get a little more out of it. But you have to replace them, and then there's the use and breakage that occurs, which happens.
So are we in the process of get new Chromebooks for everybody or?
There's a continual replacement cycle that occurs, so there's two grade levels. The goal is three grade levels each year, but it's been reduced to two grade levels, which is part of the reason we're using them a little bit longer than it's intended to, but we're, we're going to have to fix that at some point. You're just, you can't live on that replacement cycle forever.
So two grade levels each year are getting new books, let's say third and fourth grade, I mean, what? Or whatever grades we want to do and everything, and it's just a custom.
Every year.
Okay.
Yeah, you just have to keep recycling them.
About how many, I mean, Chromebooks do we usually order? I mean.
Elementary buildings have classroom sets, so there's one per every, like essentially one per every student within the building, but they're held in the class. Elementary kids do not take them home. Middle school and high school kids do. So you could roughly estimate there's 200 kids per grade level. So if you use that number, every time if we're replacing two grade levels, we have to buy 400 Chromebooks at $270. Roughly make that $300. That's what, 120,000 if I'm doing math pretty good? So it's a little bit less than that, but you add in shipping, so roughly 120,000 every year.
Every.
But then there's also the challenge then, you know, that some grade levels, we need to replace pockets of them, you know, elementary, I would imagine, as we have elementary staff here will probably tell us that their classroom sets are not as great as they would want them to be. But it's part of that challenge, you know? We, I think the district has worked really hard to make the best financial decisions to be prudent and cognizant of our taxpayers' dollars and make sure that we're very, very, I would say frugal, you know, as one who is frugal, I think that we've been very frugal to make those decisions.
Are you, we able to get grants to cover this or is this just out of the pocket?
This is one of those misnomers, I think that.
Because I've been hearing lately that people are throwing out, well, just get grants for this, grants for this and stuff.
So I think it's one of the misnomers. There are many grants that we can apply for, but the vast majority are very competitive. So one, that's an important factor. I know that they just recently, we applied for a safety grant for enhancing security on buses. And, but it's competitive and it's not a full grant. There's a match to it, so we have to contribute money to it as well. Another security grant we're going to be applying for by the middle of October. Grants, there is not a grant out there that is for operating costs, and that, that's the misnomer. We can't apply for anything for just the normal operating cost for salaries. Or at one point, there were grants for Chromebooks. There are not anymore. So that's something I think is really important, so.
I mean, I think.
Typically, grants are for new programs you're going to start. That's typically what it's for. But that's a dangerous proposition, because if you start a new program, that typically means new staff. But if you have a grant for three years, then you will probably have to get rid of the staff within three years. So it's a dangerous proposition. You know, you really want to look at if you're applying for that type of grant, have a sustainability plan in place for after the three years, because if it's working, gosh, you don't want to get rid of it, you know?
And I would just add to what Dan said. For the most part, grants will not allow you to, turn this to plans, will not allow you to purchase something that you've already been purchasing every year. It's called not to plan. Definitely with federal grants.
So like, we can't just go buy new computers for the teachers or something like that?
That's, that's a gray area. Typically, yeah, that's a normal, that's a normal purchase. That we buy teachers' computers every year, that is very likely to be not a valid purchase under, under federal laws, yeah.
Very informational, and I just think there's just a lot of things being thrown around out there. And, and I think it's important for us just to be able to really share the truth about it and not just what people think, you know?
Yeah.
You guys are the experts on the grants and stuff.
Well, and I, I will tell you, and I heard a video update just before our meeting. But one of the things I was talking about was the grants, and I, you know, I know that the board has really charged us as I come into the district to really explore those. That's why I was sharing the fact that they've applied for one. We have another one we're going to apply for. And we're going to be on the lookout for any option we can, you know? I, it's part of the reason I want to visit different businesses and industries around, because I want to see if we can partner and bring new opportunities, you know? We, a big focus that I think is really important is that we really looked at what is the key focus areas of the district. And, you know, our primary focus is how do we help kids continue to grow and achieve? And that, that's a reoccurring theme, and if that's your focus, then how do you align your resources to that? Which could be time, but also it could be financial resources. And then look at other opportunities. There's a lot of other stuff we have to do. But how do we look for other resources to do that, so we're not utilizing general funds outside of what our primary focus area is? A lot, I'm sorry, I went over.
No.
It's your time, you should.
Steve's mad.
Actually, I made all the comments I, I intended to. Like I mentioned earlier, we'll be putting more focus on all of this next month with the forecast and what this means and where we're headed.
And it'll be spelled out in the forecast and so we can show that to the public and stuff.
Sure.
I mean, I wish the public would come more to our meetings, you know, we have, you know, five people here tonight, but I mean, to see what's really going on and just assume it, you know? I guess I'm getting blurry of that, that people just assume and they don't, and they, it's important for them to see it, you know? We make it available and then they really read it and understand it.
Yeah.
So before we take the vote, I just want to mention on the health insurance issues, you mentioned there's a 19% increase, and then we had a $400 and some thousand dollar assessment. So we have about 300 employees at the district, so we already can purchase health insurance for our employees at somewhat of a discount, because we're not a small employer, meaning that we have 50 employees, we have 300. So we've then joined a consortium where we've added our buying power to that of many other districts who are in the consortium. So when we're shopping for health insurance, we're doing that as a consortium on behalf of thousands of employees, not hundreds anymore. So despite all of those efforts to keep costs down, it's just industry-wide that you're seeing these health insurance increases so much. Really, it's related to, in part, because of COVID, that during COVID, we didn't see those significant increases, because the hospitals were primarily dealing with the COVID patients. And people going for their routine care just wasn't happening. Well, people are playing catch-up now, so the claims costs are high. And that's why we have the assessment of that $400,000, because as a consortium, it basically said, your claims costs have exceeded what each of you have collected in premiums for your employees, plus what you as an employer have paid. So when you add all that together, that resulted in not so long ago us having to pay an additional $400,000 for our employees. And then now a 19% increase. So I just wanted to outline what we've done as a district to try to contain the costs as best we can. And we'll still continue to do that, and we work with our unions who've been good partners and trying to negotiate good plans, so that we can be more competitive with our dollars. Just wanted to mention that, as folks wondering what we're doing to try to be good stewards of the taxpayer's dollars. Yes. Thank you. Have a motion in a second, is that right?
We do not.
We don't, okay. So do we have a motion on the permanent appropriations with certificate?
I'll move.
A second.
I, I would hate to call for additional discussion, so let's just roll call.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
Mr. Horvath.
Yes.
Mrs. Sensi.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Does that conclude your report?
My report.
All right, thank you. Reports of the administrative team.
Yes, just a couple of things. First of all, you should definitely talk about healthcare more often, because that was like a perfect explanation. It is just the nature of it. The costs have gone up and, you know, nothing's free in healthcare, so we've got to balance that out. I want to talk about a few different things. I already talked about those grants. I just wanted to say, and I, Brian, I really appreciate you saying that earlier. It is wonderful to go into our buildings, into the community, to events, and interact with our families, our kids, our staff. It really is a wonderful place. I, I know that, you know, coming in somewhere new, it gives you a fresh view. And I can tell you, it's a, it's a great place. There's a lot of great people here. So many people that I've been able to interact with, whether at events or at store, or today when I was at a gas station. Just being able to have conversations and hear their thoughts and, you know, their appreciation for the good people that are here doing a lot of good stuff. I think that everybody should be very proud of that, the board members, the staff, the families or kids. It is a great place and clearly an ability to work together, to find the ability to reach common good and how do we do it in a very positive way for our kids. So I think people should be very proud of that. I also have to say, it's been wonderful going in our classrooms and seeing the instruction that's going on with kids and really the teaching and learning that goes on. And the creative, hands-on ways that they do that as well. You know, as an educator, at the heart of who I am, like those moments are just wonderful. And to go into a kindergarten class and hear how the kids are learning the days of the week, and the day of the month, and the month, and you know, continuing to do that morning after morning, so kids really. you know, continuing to do that morning after morning. So kids really formulate that understanding. Um, is really, you know, it, it seemed, it may seem from a person's view as a very minor thing. It's such a key, important skill for kids to gain for going into preschool and watching how we are teaching kids to work together and to work as a team and to get along with others. Like, you know, again, it feels like such a normal part of life, but it's something that, you know, at home, if you don't have brothers and sisters, you don't know how to get along with others. You have to kind of learn that and you know, it's really neat to see our staff do that at these different levels and um, I was in a math class at the high school, which I truly didn't understand much of what the teacher was talking about, but she was amazing and watching her get the interaction she was getting from students who you know, I feel like they all should be engineers and chemists, the fact that they knew this information, the degree that they did and the overwhelming percentage of kids raising their hands to answer questions. It's, it's very, very, very exciting and I think that that is the norm. It's not abnormal. So I think that's something to be really excited about. And I apologize, I talked too long again. I will turn it over. I just wanted to share a little.
So um, someone in our district's been putting a lot of stuff on Facebook this year. I don't know if you've noticed, but um, one, one of the things that's got, that pops up from time to time is uh, an emphasis on attendance, an emphasis on, on coming to school, being in school. And there are a couple of different ways that we look at attendance. If you wanna look at the daily percent of people who are attending school, you're probably between ninety-two and ninety-five percent of our kids are, are in school um, daily, which, which sounds pretty good. But then you take a look at the, the percent of kids that have ten percent of absences. So in a school year, that's eighteen days of, of absence. Ten percent is considered chronically absent and we're around twenty-five percent. So the, so the numbers kind of tell two different stories. Um, so yeah, we like, we like that ninety-two to ninety-five percent of our kids are in our, our buildings. But what about those kids that are missing one day every two weeks and what are they missing during that time? And what about our kids who are doubling that, you know, missing twenty percent of the time? So that's something that um, the state is putting an emphasis on and we really wanted to attack it. We joined uh, Stay in the Game and I've talked a little bit about this with you prior. This is a, a group that partners with um, an organization called Patel for Kids. They're out of Columbus, Ohio. And they're, they're running the data on all of this and they're giving us the, the, the data on what happens when kids miss school. Um, but they also partner with the Browns and the uh, oh, the uh, the Columbus, is it the Crew, the soccer?
Oh, yeah.
Um, the Bengals, if you happen to live in Southern Ohio. Um, so our, our partner is, is the Browns and, and so we've, we've started this process. Um, there's going to be regular updates. We're looking to do monthly challenges at the buildings and, you know, there are some times during the year where absences are, are higher than others. Um, and even certain days of the week where absences are higher than others. And so we're gonna be looking to try to attack those things and try to get kids here because it does make a difference when they're here. Pretty cool. The Browns, just out of the blue, sent us um, eight tickets for the Packers game a, a couple of weeks ago. So two of our families. Um, we, we came to the middle school and high school and asked them to identify families that um, um, either the kids had excellent attendance or they had improved over what they had done the prior year. And so uh, eight of our, um, well, eight students slash family members got to attend our only win this year. So that was, that was a good thing.
You should go more often then.
We need to get more tickets.
That's right.
And it's my understanding that if we're using the uh, the social media things that they, that they've in- included with this, that we'll continue to get more and more things. Um, they did just send us a, a giant box of uh, a really cool brown stuff that we're gonna be distributing to the buildings that we can give away as incentives. Um, from little things like little foam footballs and um, a highlighter pens with brown stuff on them to a couple of signed footballs uh, by Jerry Judy, which is cool. So um, some little uh, Bluetooth speakers that they can hook in with brown stuff on them. There's, there's good stuff and there's stuff for older kids and younger kids. Um, so look for that to be coming up throughout the, the school year. Look for constant reminders of how important it is for kids to be in school. When, when a child's not in school, they're missing out. But all the other kids in the room are missing out from what they bring to the classroom and that is a loss for everyone. So we want, we want our kids here all the time. So um, as much as you can be and, and you know, if you hear my voice right now, sometimes it's, sometimes it's a struggle, but uh, yeah. As much as, as much as you can be here and, and hopefully um, less than ten percent of the time will you be absent.
Yeah, and it's like a snowball at the top of the hill as they miss and just keeps getting, you know, that gap just keeps getting bigger.
It does. And we understand too, you know, I mean, uh, uh, you know, family members sick, you know, those ki- those kinds of things are going to happen and, and, you know, but it's just try to, try to cut down on those days that you can avoid. If you, if you, if you could schedule a doctor's appointment on a, on an evening or on a Saturday, try to do that and, and, and have, have the kids in school.
Are we um, following up with the kids that are missing? Are we making phone calls still?
Yeah, and we even do preemptive stuff at the beginning of the year when we look back at who was chronically absent and make some phone calls. And it's not to threaten and say, you need to get them here. It's, it's to say, how can we help? You know, if you're, if you're struggling, if your kids aren't wanting to come, is it an engagement issue? Are they not engaged in, in the things that we have to offer? How can we help them to get involved and encourage them? Um, so that's what we're looking to do. We're looking to be, you know, part of the, part of the village that's trying to, to help raise kids.
Steelers send any tickets?
No, no, Brian. Brian's family.
Thought we could shred them at the next board meeting. Apparently nothing to shred.
Um, so I'll go. And one of the things, if you were wondering what the donation of pizza boxes was for, from KJX. Uh, Mr. Rambler loves pizza and especially from KJX. However, it did not have pizza in them. They were empty. And what the kids did was uh, use them to as uh, as a form for their block. So that was the stepping stone project that was in so. So they put the stuff in there and so I just wanted to clarify. It's not pizzas, unfortunately for uh.
That's a lot of pizza.
Yes, yes.
You sure Dan didn't eat thirty-two pieces?
Well, it could. I wasn't actually there. I saw the after then, so. Um, I wanted to also talk, so we have our positive behavior um, supports and it actually goes from pre-K all the way to the high school. And so our pre-K picked off their uh, PBIS this year and it was a luau themed. And the kids had all kinds of um, fun activities. They, you know, all wore Hawaiian shirts. They had um, a little assembly, you know, talking about, you know, how we can be positive and nice, you know, and behavior, street behavior. And uh, they were all, they all came out with red mouths because um, we got a donation from Ricky Belcher over at Dairy Queen. So the star, you know, those little red things. So all of the parents, as we were walking to the cars, we're like, why do you have red on your face? So, um, another thing we have going on is uh, NAMI is working in our buildings. And it's a real nice partnership. They support mental health and the high school really got involved uh, this last month. And I think at the last football game, they wore pink and blue in honor of suicide prevention, I think. And so as it, so happens, we didn't realize when uh, Dave, Dan and I sat down with the gal. Um, her name, somehow it came up and she was a former graduate, you know, she had said, and then I remember her brother. And he was at the high school when I was there and then there was a connection to suicide and why she decided to uh, go into working with NAMI. So it's nice. So she's a Madison graduate working with, you know, her Madison um, school. Uh, also we have, talking about using some grant money and how it impacts special education. Not just impacts and the special ed- education, but also just interventions for all students so that we can hopefully avoid having um, you know, students who are identified. And that's the MTSS, the multi-tier systems of support. And because now we've started uh, getting all of the data collected after the beginning of the school year, we've really been working across all of the buildings and especially through uh, TBT, um, teacher-based team times, trying to have more conversations, direct impact on how to do interventions, what it come, you know, what interventions can be done uh, within the students and it's also for behavior. Which leads into my next thing is we have a math coach that the state has. So again, this was unfunded through the state. We have a lot of things that are funded through the state and so uh, this year, so this is one of them. And Madison was identified, uh, the state support team. Said, you know, there's some math coaches and they wrote for us to get some uh, help. And so that's gonna be at the middle school. And then we talked, there's another cohort. So these are all kind of cohorts and, and things. So there's a cohort starting next year. Uh, that's gonna also some kind of extended. There's a math cohort that's going to be starting that we've already kind of planted the seed for and that's uh, the middle school as well. And so then to the next thing, I know I'm talking, sorry, it's all super exciting stuff. I actually have great stuff going on. And so, but I have all kinds of different things. So it's not just special education. So now I have gifted. And so we've really been working uh, this year to kind of shore up our gifted program and we get gifted money from the state. Unfortunately, this year it had decreased, so we use the money that we do get uh, to the best of our ability. And so students are mandated to be identified, but they don't have to be serviced. And so we're working on ways to utilize the funds in our staff. And we're getting professional development. So we've been really working on it at the elementary school. Middle school has kind of come on and now the high school is starting. So we've expanded uh, the professional development and the, we have a gifted coordinator that's working directly with the teachers to kind of help and guide different ways for extension um, activities. So you know, usually I'm talking about support for students who have learning disabilities. Now we have students who are really trying to help uh, in our gift or in our uh, at the high school, they're serviced in the honors classes and in the AP classes.
So this is a new person that we hired?
Uh, we have to, we have to have a gifted coordinator. We have had her for two years. We contract with the ESC. So we have her, I think, three days a week. She's part-time. And so she kind of goes through all of the buildings. She's available by email. And so we have some policies and things that are gonna be coming up that we're updating, so.
And you said about the grant money for um, impacts, the special ed. You know about how much we get from that, up this overhead?
For?
Yes, cause you, you said grant money.
MTSS maybe.
Yeah, yeah, the, yeah, the multi-tier thing.
So that is, so we are having, go ahead.
I'm sorry, the funding for MTSS, as I recall, was twenty thousand dollars and leave it's a, within a two-year with Spagali, I can't, I can't remember.
Right.
Slatter.
Spagali.
Spagali.
Right, there's all kinds of acronyms, so I apologize.
That's an old one that came back, that's why I know.
Right, right. Spagali, right. So we try, yeah, so there's, there's all kinds of little and then um, this one, the cohort that we're gonna start the following year. I'm not sure what the monetary value is. We haven't gotten, cause it's gonna be starting in twenty-six, twenty-four.
And that one for next year is gonna involve curriculum and kind of a shift of middle school math curriculum really. So I believe that's a multi-year one and I believe that's around twenty thousand dollars a lot as well, but oftentimes that money is to be used for materials and professional development, you know, cause we're asking teachers to spend more time on something or, you know, to go to places and get professional development, so. But again, it's, you know, funding that's often very much aligned to a goal.
Uh, when I was at the high school last Friday, I got to see the sensory room with you.
Yes.
And I was very impressed with the, the, the new sensory room and all the work that went into doing that. And how that's impacting just not kids in special needs, correct?
Right.
That other kids can use it.
Right.
And um, they just maybe need a timeout. I don't know timeout's the right word or what.
Yeah, so the sensory room at the high school, we have sensory rooms at um, the elementary middle. And there had been one in the high school and then I did kind of the use and the necess, you know, the need for it had sort of um, kind of fallen to the wayside, but we realized now the population of students that we have that is increasing, especially for behavior and uh, also students who are on the spectrum, there's lots of loud noises and lights and so a lot of overstimulation. And so we realized there was a need and we were able to, we had some donations um, last year from families that helped with some of the materials. And it's just a quiet, you know, there's a couple uh, rooms at the high school that are not in use and so it's uh, Pat Smith, it was a big, um, you know, it was a group effort, um, our occupational therapist. Uh, the Sped, uh, the gal that I have that helps me and uh, the kids, you know, they were part of uh, decorating it. And so it's just a quiet space. The lights are low. There's different.
I wanted to stay in there longer.
Yeah, there's a yoga man.
I was just enjoying myself and I wanted to stay, yeah, relax in there.
So it's um, it's working out well.
Yeah, but thank you for that. Thank you. Already.
Okay. Um, next are my recommendations. I have a number of items. So under number one is the approval of donations. Tiffany Green is, who was the building sub at South Elementary and then accept the ret- retirement of Don Hawkins, who is the head custodian at South. And you can see that that's after thirty years of services. Retirement will be effective January first, so he turned that in early so we should begin working on replacement plans as well, which he has been doing as we go, but really appreciate all of his years of service obviously to the district. Under number two, entering into employment contracts, A, there are thirteen individuals that we are employing for substitute teachers. This is through our cooperation with the Educational Service Center to help us secure substitutes. Under B, we have seventeen individuals who are certified personnel for one-year limited supplemental contracts for the positions listed following their name and locations. Under C, we have five individuals who are non-certification, non-certificated persons for a one-year limited personal service contract again for those positions stated following their names. Under D, we have two individuals as casual day-to-day substitutes for the school district to be able to utilize throughout the school year. E, we would like to amend the long-term substitute contract of Marilyn Crane. She's at the pre-K as a long-term substitute to two hundred and thirty-seven days, or two hundred and thirty-seven dollars and nine cents per day. Reflective of her certification and criteria within her experience in the district or in education, I should say. Have to employ the persons of, for the positions and at the rate of compensation and other terms and conditions identified as below. Christine Cruz, a special needs aide at the autism unit. Catherine Finelli as the nutrition services substitute. And Leanna Raver as the payroll assistant. Under number two, we have items for your approval for following unpaid leave request. We have four individuals requested unpaid leave. We have four individuals requested unpaid leave for the dates identified for each of the four individuals listed below. Then under number one, we're sending the following contract, which is to a supplemental, supplemental limited contract for the position identified. Those are followed, amended their consideration and approval.
I'll move.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
Mr. Hervin.
Yes.
Mr. Sensi.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
And then ten-two is the retirement resolution, which is for Don Hawkins. And then type three is the memorandum of understanding for a MOU with the OAPSC Local Two Thirty-eight for a contract, which was actually correcting contractual language, which was agreed upon, but did not appropriate that you get notated within the contractual agreement. So it was not an actual change or change or reflect the authenticity of what had been negotiated.
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
Mr. Hervin.
Yes.
Mr. Sensi.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
The next item is item eleven, the consent calendar. Under A, to approve the amendment of the, or the addendum of ESC Western Reserve for Staffing Programs for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. B, to approve an overnight trip for Madison High School baseball. C, to approve an overnight trip for Madison High School Boys Wrestling. D, to approve an overnight trip for Madison High School Boys Wrestling. E, to approve a overnight trip for Madison High School Girls Wrestling. F, to approve the consultant contract between Madison Local Schools and Rachel Carvin, the, the music, musical choreographer, director. C, to approve the consultant contract between school district and Perry Mans to be the musical act director for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. And H, to approve an agreement with Perry School District for payroll processing services. These are all presented for your consideration and approval.
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
Mr. Hervin.
Yes.
Mr. Sensi.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Did we miss this?
I have.
Did we miss this MEA member of the month?
You know, in my car, I always have to put in the Google map stuff, so I left stuff. I feel like it's a reflection of that. Ten point oh-four, I apologize, I missed. Is for the Madison Education Association, I'm right. I shall turn it over.
That's okay.
I apologize.
If that's the agenda with flexibility, right? I like that.
I do too.
Okay, so I want to start by saying thank you again to Dan and to all of you for allowing MEA to continue doing this this year. I know this is our second year doing the member of the month program. And this is our first one for the year. Just a little background. The MEA wrote a grant through the Ohio Education Association, and we were able to obtain fifty thousand dollars. Twenty-five thousand for last year and twenty-five thousand for this year. And part of that grant, we wrote in our member of the month program. And the way it works is the members are invited to nominate other members. The, the goal sort of being that we see our colleagues, you know, each day, maybe doing those little things that aren't always necessarily huge and flashy, but really making a difference for students and for staff and for the building and the community. We really wanted to encourage people to highlight those things. And so we have a form. People can make nominations at any time, our members. And they, you know, sort of enter in who they're nominating and why they feel that individual should be recognized. And then our executive board for MEA meets monthly, and we look over all of the nominations. And it's voted in, in the executive team as to who our member of the month will be. And with the program, we also wanted to emphasize local businesses. So each month, our member of the month gets a fifty-dollar gift card to a local establishment. This month, we have Wild Burrito. It's our business of choice. So our, our members can enjoy a night without cooking. So this month, I'm excited to introduce Scott Klein. Scott is our new band director at the high school, and from the nominations I got, he's doing an amazing job. I had the privilege of listening to the band at the Lake County Band Show a few weeks ago, and they knocked it out of the park. They were amazing. I know Mr. Tomko has had wonderful words about Scott and working with him and what an asset he's been to our band program. In addition, he was actually nominated by two other members for this. Just recognizing.
Well, it's got a short time, right? Does that tell you?
You are going places. Just Dovin and marching band is a big thing to tackle as a, a band parent. I know the amount of time that I put in. I can't imagine the time that these directors are putting in to make a successful and amazing program for our kids. In addition to that, you're also working with our jazz band program as well. So I'd invite everyone to look for concerts and come check that out and enjoy that. So congratulations to Scott. It's a little certificate.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Scott.
The next item here is item, well, twelve point oh-one is the Madison Public Library Board of Trustees requesting that Dan and Craig Mike be a member of the Madison Public Library Board of Trustees again this month.
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
Mr. Hervin.
Yes.
Mr. Sensi.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
We do not have a need for executive session, so we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move.
A second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
Mr. Hervin.
Yes.
Mr. Sensi.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Are we stand adjourned?